Okay, I now call this meeting to order digitally. Pursuant to the governor's order, which has been extended through March.
Right.
Yes.
And the first item here is the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any against? Wonderful. The next item of the agenda here is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting on the 26th of this year, January. Does anyone have any notes or comments on those minutes?
No.
I would move approval.
Okay.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any against? Wonderful. Next up, we'll cover old business and Kelly will talk to us about staff approved COAs.
Okay, well, this section will be brief because there's only been one administrative COA since our last meeting, which is this property at 244 East Main Street. It's actually next door to one of the properties that you all saw at your last meeting. And it's just a simple roof replacement. So that was approved administratively. This is also the site of another, this building on the Rome Street side, we had a sign that was approved administratively last month as well. Okay, so for upcoming initiatives, we wanted to take some time to talk about the Tree Streets Design Guidelines rewrite. There are a couple of different facets to the update we want to give you all. I think that the chair has some information on committees, I believe. I believe Hal does as well. I wanted to give you all a sort of draft timeline that I put together. This is of course contingent on, you know, discussing this with the committee once we have that committee formed, but just to kind of take a stab at how long we're looking at and what all would be involved in the process, just kind of put this together. So we're looking at about four months from start to finish. And I'll just kind of go through you the different, go through the different phases with you quickly. The first phase would be, and again, this is all contingent on, you know, committee agreeing that this is a good path or tweaking with the committee. But the first phase would be to start a survey, a written survey of all of the properties. We would use the existing documents and documentation that we have from both the National Register nomination survey, and then the Tennessee Historical Commission also has a GIS-based survey of all the, or not all, but of many of the historic assets in Tennessee. So we would, you know, kind of use those two documents together to come up with a first kind of draft of written updated survey. And then the following week, we would do a field check. So, you know, look at each house, make sure that that information is as accurate as possible and make changes as appropriate. The next phase would be really defining the district character. There, and you know, what are the distinguishing characteristics? What are the types of features that we want to see preserved? We have some of that in the design guidelines now, but we would want to, as we've discussed before, we would want to include, you know, our modern structures and, and some of the other types of features that we deem worthy of preservation and restoration. The next would be to establish the rating system. We talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, so you know, four or five different ratings that would designate properties as, you know, maybe gold rated at the top and green rated at the bottom and establishing a decision-making structure that is sensitive to that rating. So the highest rated structures would come to you all even for minor repairs, whereas the lowest rated structures may not come to you all for, for what may be considered major renovations. We would just suss all that out and decide, decide on that. And then the, the purpose and goals. You know, so we want to make sure that we understand what is the purpose of these guidelines? Is it, is it strictly preservation? Is it to promote restoration? Is it, you know, to have, which I don't think this commission would be in favor of, but you know, to create sort of replicas when we have new construction, or is it to make sure that we have honest expressions of the area in which these buildings were built? How additions are handled, et cetera. So I think that's a really big part of it. And then to start to draft an outline. So what are the elements of the design guidelines? And kind of decide on those as a way to tackle writing the meat of it. Then I think we would need to have a public meeting at the midway point before we actually start writing the standards, so that we can bring it to the public and say, you know, here is what we think are the defining characteristics of this neighborhood. Here is what we see as the distinctive features, you know, here's what we think the purpose and goals of these guidelines are. So that we have that input and feedback from the community at the sort of high level stage before we start getting into the nitty-gritty of writing all the standards. And then, you know, the, the big chunk, of course, is writing the standards. And then we would have a period where, we did this with the bridge plan and it was helpful, just, I just created like three different kind of styling options. So, you know, just a couple pages to show what the, the look of the document would be, so you all could choose which one you prefer. We, of course, would need to follow the brand guidelines for the city's brand guidelines. So we're, they won't look too, too different, but you know, we would just decide if we want a bolder look or a more kind of serious look or those different options. And then the graphics and illustrations, you know, so showing things like setbacks and amassing and proper penetration and spacing and proportions and things like that. And then the last week, we will have, you know, a copy editing phase. I think that in the writing of the standards, there'll definitely be copy editing and proofreading built in throughout, but we do want to have, once the whole document is compiled, a group of people to really go through it and make sure there are no grammatical errors, of course, but also, you know, things like spacing and wait a second, this isn't really clear, should we add this, et cetera. And then I think at the end of that, we would have, and I would need to discuss this, Preston and I haven't discussed this, and of course, we discussed this with the committee as well, but another public meeting before it's brought to you all for adoption. You know, obviously, when it's brought to you all for adoption, there will be the opportunity for public input, but it would be nice that there is the opportunity for public input before you also have the pressure of adopting it at the same time. So just kind of wanted to put that out there that, you know, starting to, to think about timeline, and I think that four months is somewhat aggressive, but, but realistic too. And, oh yeah, and I have in here that I think it would be good, maybe this is pertinent to who's going to be on the committee, but I think it would be nice if the committee could meet every two weeks, just to kind of have a standing appointment every two weeks. Will allow us to do progress updates, to, to proof some of the drafts and to provide input and feedback on a regular basis. And, yep. So that's where we are with that, and I know that Nathan had some, some information about the committees.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Kelly. Thanks for this. This is great. I love this timeline. So, yeah, so with the committees, you know, one important point that some of us may know, but it never hurts to reiterate is that we can't have four members on a committee because then we would have a quorum and it just would fall into questionable legal territory. So three is the maximum number on a committee. So I, I would like to appoint Cooper, Megan and Hal, as I recall that y'all all volunteered. Is that correct?
I, I did, but I ended up stepping back so that Cooper could participate. I think Wesley initially had shown interest, so I stepped down so Cooper could participate in that.
Yes, I did.
Wonderful. Okay, well, if that's, if that still stands, then we can appoint Wesley instead, Megan.
And we could do Megan as an alternate, if you would like.
I, I'm fine with that.
If Megan's, if Megan's comfortable with that, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to contribute. I just, I think, again, as a new member, it'd be a great experience and, and so I'm happy to be an alternate.
I agree. I agree. I think this will be a good learning experience for you, Cooper. This is great. We don't, when was the last time we did this, Hal?
Um, what, the full guidelines?
Yeah, the first time, thirty years ago.
Oh, yeah, on the Tree Streets, when the district was created in nineteen, I think these first ones were approved in nineteen ninety-nine.
Wow.
Oh, wow.
They've had a couple of updates, amendments or something, but I have no idea what those were.
Wow.
But yeah.
Wonderful. Well, with that settled, Hal, do you have the representatives that the neighborhood has chosen?
Uh, well, we've, we've only come up with one.
Okay.
Sent out an email, had our, our lustre's president send out an email to the membership, which kind of defined what we were looking for and who would want some volunteers. Nobody stepped forward, but at the meeting, a member, Leslie Starr, who lives at seven twelve West Maple, has volunteered to be a neighborhood member of the committee. And that's, but nobody else seemed interested. They didn't want to take it on. I think they want to sit back and shoot, shoot at it.
Right.
The easier job.
Yeah.
I do think too that we didn't have great attendance at that particular neighborhood meeting, so maybe if we were to offer it again, when there's more folks in attendance, we may get more bites.
Yeah, we have a little, maybe another, we'll get a little more details to exactly what we're doing and how we're operating. I think that might help also. I think there's some people, people out there.
How often do you meet, Hal?
Once a month.
Once a month, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, but yeah, this whole COVID thing has really
Yeah.
Cut down attendance. I mean, you know, when we were meeting down at JRH, once a month, I mean, we drew a lot of people.
Yeah, there's no beer on Zoom, as it turns out.
No, there isn't.
No.
Unless you bring your own.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
All right, well, well, this is great. So Kelly, what are our next steps, setting our first meeting for the, for the committee?
Right, and I, I would like to mention, and, and just make sure that this is still the case at the last meeting. Jay said that he would be available if we could use his expertise for, if needed, great. And, and Megan, I would love, you know, your input on the, the nerdy historical stuff.
Oh, Kelly, you will get it.
Great.
Happy to.
Great. So, so as long as, you know, we still kind of have all the expertise available, that's great, but just not technically on the committee.
Absolutely. I think that's, go ahead, Jay.
Sorry, I was gonna say, if I technically have to be an alternate to, you know, help advise, then I'd be happy to do that, or if you just want to do things through email and phone calls and stuff like that, that's fine too.
Great. I mean, I think it would be good to have alternates.
Right.
Definitely, definitely.
Great.
Yeah, well, let's, yeah, I think that, that's a great strategy because we, I would love to, for the, this committee to keep the general body as informed as possible and we can, you know, discuss things as they come up. That would be great.
Great.
Yeah.
Kelly, can you, can you forward the timeline that you have here too?
Absolutely.
Yes, I was gonna ask that.
Sure.
Yeah, that's beautiful, Kelly. Thank you for putting that together. It's a great graphic.
Good. I, I having trouble seeing it. I'm sure I can see it better when I'm off my iPad.
Yes, definitely. I'll send a high-res PDF.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, and I'll, I can send that information for Leslie. Send that to Kelly and I'll send it to you and Nicole also, so we'll both have, everybody has it and then
Great.
We'll got it and can share it from there.
Great.
Wonderful. Thanks, Kelly. Well, my assumption that we would be that we can take care of the scheduling for this meeting, first committee meeting over email. Is that, is that fair?
That's what I assume.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's right.
All right. All right, what's next?
Next. Notification requirements. This is something that came up in a, in a meeting between Preston and Nathan and I. And it definitely something we need to be thinking about in, in writing the Tree Streets guidelines. So currently, our requirements for notification are just that they must be posted on the city's website three days prior to the commission meeting. And, you know, the question came up that since the commission is a quasi-judicial body, why do we not have the same notice procedures as the BZA? You know, you all are charged with reviewing things from a judicious standpoint, you know, from making interpretations, from kind of making those kind of tough calls when the staff isn't quite sure how to interpret things. And in those cases, you know, you usually have greater public notice. As far as what we were, we are required to do, it just says ample or adequate, I believe. But, you know, across the board, for boards of zoning adjustments, a good rule of thumb in Tennessee is about seven days prior. But that is just, you know, publishing on the website. You know, for the BZA notices are, are sent, letters are sent that talk about the specific item. And then I looked at some other HZCs in the city, in the, in Tennessee, just to kind of have a comparative base. For the city of Maryville sends notices to property owners within three hundred feet, seven days prior. And of course, you know, posts on the website and also in the paper, which we just started doing, right, Nicole? Posting in the paper, we had not done that before.
No, this was the first time we've ever done that. Since we are recorded and we're not live streaming, I, I think it was a good thing. I think it's worked out very well. Along with the other meetings, but that's just my opinion, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, I, I think there's the bare bones of what we absolutely have to do and, but the vast majority of boards do more than that because we want public awareness. We want people to, to make us aware of things that we may not be made aware of otherwise. The city of Nashville does the same thing as the city of Maryville. It's within three hundred feet. City of Knoxville actually posts signs on the property and they send notices ten days prior. So this just might be something that we want to consider adding into the, the Tree Streets Design Guidelines, and of course, we would incorporate that into the, the downtown design guidelines, whatever we feel is appropriate. I think it's something that we'll continue to discuss and certainly don't need to figure out tonight, but it was just something that we wanted to, to make you all aware of that we're looking into. I'm also waiting to hear back from the shippo on, you know, what is sort of standard across these historic zoning commissions.
Thanks, Kelly. Yeah, I'm strongly in favor, particularly of these signs. Because every time I see those, you know, that, you know, something is coming before the zoning commission, for instance, I do some digging and try to look into it to make sure I'm informed. So I, I love the signs.
Yeah.
Getting that out to the general public. You know, as a commission, I don't think any of these responsibilities would fall on us. So I think really the question is whether the city can meet these requirements if we institute them, which I'm guessing that we would, you know, theoretically like to do, and we can vote on that at a future time, but as long as the city feels comfortable, my guess is that commissioners would be in favor of more access to knowledge for the public, but I would love to hear from y'all.
Yeah, Nathan, so the, the commission have, the city commission have to approve this, then, if we do, if we do this?
Would it be a change to the bylaws or would it be a change to the code for individual districts?
It would be a change to the bylaws. So this wouldn't be a zoning text amendment. That would be something that you all could do.
Okay, so we even have to go through the city commission then?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, about to change our bylaws.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
I was wondering if the city commission had any other requirements just for all commissions, or, you know, like as a blanket requirement, or is it really just left up to each body?
We have state law requirements that apply for zoning map amendments and for text amendments. But beyond that, it is really up to the individual board and permission. Preston, if you're there, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you are, you are correct. I was, I was parking, right, as those questions were being asked. These are, these are individual requirements. Actually, the state of Tennessee is, is somewhat, they really leave it up to the, to the locality as to what the notification requirements are. I was a little surprised that, that at the state level or statutorily, the requirements are, are quite minimal. So what that means is that it just is, is left up to each locale and then each board. But it is appropriate that if you are going to go above and beyond the state minimums, which most people do, as Kelly's noted, that, that not be done just in practice, that it be put in your bylaws or your rules of procedure, something along those lines. That would, if it's ever challenged, or if it's ever questioned, we have a place where we can go to and, and, and call that out, but I, I would agree that, now I realize I'm, I'm kind of, I'm, 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 I'm coming from a place of bias, but in my previous location, we did stick in the ground signs for historic districts. And because your historic districts are typically, well, almost always, they are smaller in land area than the jurisdiction itself. And so the stick in the ground signs tend to work really well and in addition to the mailings. But to answer your question, Nathan, no, that's not a problem at all for, from a staffing perspective.
You know. Wonderful.
Yeah, I mean, we have to, I mean, it's, it's our responsibility to make sure that that kind of thing would get done. If we ever claimed that we couldn't drive around and put a sign in the ground piece of property, then we've got bigger problems and so.
Right. Yeah, yeah, I like, I like the idea of the signs. What you're talking about basically is if there's a request coming up for a CVA or something like that, we would notify on that. I don't know, there's some way we could also do a sign that says this, a COA has been granted. Because a lot of times, you know, we've had situations here in the Three Streets where property owners come to us, gotten a CVA, and then sat on it for nine months before they got anything going. And then when they did get something going and built something, it was nothing at all like what we approved. And then the neighbors were running around saying, well, how did that get approved? How did that get approved? And of course, it frustrates me like crazy because I think Nathan and Jay probably get the same thing, and even Megan. Nobody comes to us and says, hey, did you guys approve this? And I think, you know, if that information were out there and somebody saw that, but there was no sign on it, that might prompt them to say, hey, you know, what's going on here?
Oh, great.
No, that's actually a very good point that you bring up, Hal. We, we ran into that in Salisbury, right, well, about a year or so before my departure. We had that exact same conversation with the HPC and the solution ended up being, what I would argue, a, a really good one, because it, rather than using a sign, sometimes folks feel like the sign in the yard is, is clutter. And so, so I don't, I don't disagree with the aesthetic concern surrounding signs. I think the sign is a, is a, is a necessary evil to get notice out for the public hearing. But then once the COA has been issued, what we started doing was issuing laminated and using a kind of an obnoxious color, eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper that was laminated, that said that a certificate of appropriateness has been issued for this property for this type of work. And then that was to be placed somewhere visible from the public street. And that really worked well. It was, and, you know, you all could identify what the color of the paper needed to be, but something that stood out and that had, you know, Historic Zoning Commission Certificate of Appropriateness on it. That way, it's, it's posted on the building. It's a little less obtrusive than a stick in the ground sign, but it still gets the word out that they've got a COA.
I think that's, you know, that's very similar to how building permits are handled. You're technically supposed to post your building permit so that it's visible from the street. I think you could put this one right next to it because all of these projects should have a building permit as well.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I think that this would be an especially valuable practice to go ahead and implement too, because as we see more and more projects coming up in historic districts, both downtown and in the Tree Streets, especially after the guidelines, it'd be great to have folks more involved and engaged with the process and understanding how it works and giving them an opportunity to, you know, to see how, to benefit from that exposure, I guess. So I, I'm in favor. I think that this is a really great idea and in, in support of it.
Right.
I noticed, I remember we were in Savannah, walking around, and they would have a building that was being somehow, you know, coming up for renovation or whatever. They had a big sign posted in the window around the building. The, the CVA had been granted for that building. And then that doggone thing, it was like an eighteen by eighteen sign.
We had something similar for the city of New Orleans. It was, it was probably about in between what you and Preston are talking about. It was like eleven by seventeen and it was always posted next to the, to the building permit, just like Jay said. And, and it had the expiration date as well, so anybody passing by could see, okay, this has expired. So that's something else we might want to consider, you know. What is the expiration date for COAs and can they be extended? Can staff extend them? Should they come back to you?
What is our current expiration date for a COA?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Six months or twelve months or?
I thought it was twelve months.
I think it's twelve months, yeah.
Yeah, I think it is.
I think it is. We don't list it on the actual COA. So that's something we can start doing now, just immediately list it.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be really great. All right, well, that, that, that was a great discussion. What's next, Kelly?
All right. Next, we have new business. We have one certificate of appropriateness for you all to review. And I believe the property owner is on the line. This is for the property at eleven oh one Southwest Avenue. It is a screen porch addition and a sunroom installation. So this is the view from southwest. This is the view from Boyd looking toward southwest. And this is the view from Cedar Place. So you can see the lot narrows significantly and, and has a, a much smaller rear property line than the, the front property line. This is the rear elevation, which, where the work is proposed. What is proposed is the removal of this, can you all see my cursor?
Yes.
The removal of this existing sunroom and the replacement of it with a mudroom. It will be the exact same dimensions and will sit on the existing slab. And then the installation of a screen porch in this area here. Show you the site plan submitted by the applicant. So here's the rear wall of the house. Here is this new mudroom, and then here is the screened deck area. As you can see, it will come out a little bit past, about two feet past the mudroom. And the intent is to have one roof that will cover both of these. And the roof line will come down to the edge of the screen deck, so it will create a little covered walkway here leading. And that's an existing walkway, as you can see right here. And there is some, some information about materials and dimensions on the sketch provided by the applicant. The intent is for, you know, essentially, these are the, the two new walls for the screen deck. It will use the, the other walls for, for these two sides. There's a new door and then a step up and door here, a door here, and then one window here. So this window would be facing Boyd. And then one window here. So this window would be facing Boyd. And the applicant says that he will, um, you know, match the, the shingle roof, um, to the greatest extent possible and also match the, the white siding, um, to the greatest extent possible.
Is there any information on the configuration of the roof? That I believe it, it would, it would be a single roof going all the way across, but is there, is it going to be a single shed slope to it? Do we know, would it match the existing slope on the house?
Right. Um, we don't have any drawings to that effect. We do have, um, the applicant here and we can, we can ask him for some further details on that. But as, in terms of the narrative, um, he said it would tie in below the second floor windows here, um, and be a, a single slope down.
Thank, thank you all for, uh, considering this and thank you Kelly Nicole for making my presentation look a whole lot better than the sketch. Uh, to answer the question on the roof or the, the roof slip, it's, if you look at the back of the house, it's such a steep pitch that I don't know that the, wouldn't be possible to continue that out, uh, very many feet before you hit the ground.
Right. So we're talking about a new, a new shed, right? Tied in below these windows.
That's correct. We would tie it in as high as possible. We thought that would look, uh, better and more in line with the rest of the house. If we had a, a longer pitch to that, but I don't, it, it's a very steep, the second tier down here, right above the kitchen window and the back door, uh, is, is pretty steep pitch. So I don't think you could continue that pitch out very far at all.
Okay.
Do you know what the upper pitch is? Looks like it might be a five and twelve, something like that.
I'm sorry, I have no idea.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just finish up with the, the staff analysis if that's okay. Okay. Um, so, you know, in our looking at this, I should also note there are, are, when I originally received this application, I, I, um, thought that it could be approved administratively. Um, for a couple of reasons, you know, the design guidelines, as we've talked about the need to rewrite them, they're not, there are some inconsistencies throughout them. Um, and because of those inconsistencies, I thought it best to bring, to bring to you all, but there are several places throughout that state that if it's not an expansion of livable floor area, that it is not within the purview of the commission. Um, and also if it is not visible from public, a public street, that it's not within the purview of the commission. I think that's definitely arguable. I mean, the view from the public street is obstructed, but there are places that you can see this structure, right? So, um, you know, didn't feel comfortable saying that it was completely invisible from the public street. Um, the livable floor area though, I, I, you know, that is, the applicant has made that clear that the envelope, in addition to the, uh, with the exception of the screen porch will not expand. Um, and of course, screen porches are not considered livable. However, because there are these inconsistencies in the guidelines, there are places that say an expansion of livable floor area and/or visible from the public street. So there's just, I thought it best just to bring it to you all and also not having the privilege of the institutional knowledge of knowing how you all have defined things like livable floor area and, you know, visibility from the street in the past. Thought it a good learning experience for me to, to get some more information from you all and how you define those things. So assuming that it is, you know, with review and needs to be reviewed, um, it does comply with the design guidelines and that the modifications will not radically change the historic appearance of the building. Um, no character defining features will be obscured. Um, the additions are at the rear rather than the principal facade. Um, Hal and I talked about this a bit. There are lots of places throughout the guidelines that talk about modifications on principal facades, on principal facades. So there is this, um, this, you get the sense that it's intended only to be reviewed on, on principal facades. Uh, but again, it's not super clear, something that we're going to clear up, um, with the rewrite. Um, and again, that it does not increase the habitable square footage and that the new materials are, are to match the existing materials to the greatest extent possible. Um, so with that, we recommend approval. Um, we do have one recommendation and that be that this window, since it will be visible from Boyd Street here, um, you know, be a double hung true divided window to match, um, the proportion of, of this, these light configurations to the, to the greatest extent possible. As you can see, there's a little gated entry here. Um, I wish I had a view looking right at it, but that is where there's a break in vegetation. So that, that window will certainly be, um, visible from Boyd Street right here.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Um, does anyone have any questions for Kelly before we open up the public comment for the applicant? Great. Okay. Well, let's go ahead and open up, uh, public comment and, uh, the applicant is here. If you, if he wishes to speak, does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Shouldn't he identify himself, Nathan, first and the address?
Yes.
My name is, uh, James Fogarty. I live at eleven oh one Southwest Avenue.
Thank you, James. Uh, James, I do have a question for you. What I see in the presentation, the siding, uh, is listed as, as white siding. And nine, nine, I'm assuming it says nine feet, but I think it must mean nine inch here. And, uh, it, what is that material?
Um, well, it, it's, sorry, it, it would be nine inch siding and I don't think, um, based on all the contractors I've talked to, I don't think nine inch white siding is now available. Uh, we would try and match it as, as closely as possible based on what is available. I don't, uh, they make nine inch siding anymore. And, uh, that, sorry, the, the siding would be the same type of siding that we have. We don't have wood siding. No, it would not be aluminum or metal. Um, we have vinyl siding on the house currently and we would use the same material.
So do you know, it would be larger or smaller than what you currently have on the siding?
I, I think we can only scale down.
Scale down? Okay.
Yeah, I don't think you can go above nine inches. And we want, uh, the intent is not to go above nine inches. Match as closely as possible going lower.
Okay. What roof pitch do you intend that roof to have?
Um, I would have to ask our contractor on the, the roof pitch. I don't know what the pitch.
Okay. Cause I'm also wondering what the, um, what the bearing elevation would be in relationship to the existing roof.
I can ask both those questions and, uh, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. I also was looking at the plan. It looks like you have two, a two foot difference from the face of the, uh, what will be the new mudroom to the face of the screen deck and you're showing a door there. Are you intending to have, how, how wide do you intend that door to be, I guess?
Um, the, I guess it would be the width of whatever you could fit. And I think the walkway is two feet wide. So I believe it would be the width of, uh, I guess as large as you could get within that two feet wide area.
Okay. I'm not sure, I'm not gonna speak directly. You may want to talk to the city building department, but I'm not sure that's a legal door size.
Okay. Well, so if it was legal, we would, we, we definitely meet whatever is legal.
Right. Which, which again, yeah, and I guess we would, it would be easier to evaluate that with some elevations to, you know, kind of see what that really looks like. I, I mean, I don't know. I mean, you know, there's, you know, what, what is the construction intended for the mudroom? Is this going to be wood framed with siding on it? Is this going to be largely glass as the, um, you know, I guess, would, would this be an interior space or would this be more of another porch?
Uh, no, it would be wood framed. Uh, there only be the window on the boy facing str- side of the, the structure. And the door and the door would probably have a glass on the top half of the, the portion of the door.
Okay. So you're taking what's now a porch space. It's, you know, a metal, you know, looks like a prefabricated unit. Or, or a packaged unit, taking that down and then, and that, that would be considered a porch, but then you're framing what would be an interior room, which would then be considered part of the house rather than a porch attached to the house, correct?
Um, we, we would be removing them, the sunroom, which is basically screwed together structure. And we would be, I guess, creating, I, I don't know if it would be interior. There's still an exterior door here. Uh, sorry, where you see the house written? This is all siding on the outside. There's like a, maybe a five, five door here, five foot high, five inches. Um, and so I don't know that it would be an interior structure.
Well, what I mean is you're creating, and you're creating a room that, that would be considered inside, not on a porch, not a deck, but it would be, it would be a room that's part of the house.
It, it's definitely more enclosed than the current structure.
Okay. So would, would you condition it? Would you heat it? Would you insulate it?
Yeah, it would be insulated, yes.
Okay. I have a question, James. Oh, go ahead, Jake. No, go ahead. No, so as I say, I'm, cause I guess I'm interpreting this as, you know, you're taking down a porch and then in its place creating an addition on the house. It just happens to use the, the existing foundation.
Um, yeah, I'd say that's accurate.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the same footprint.
Okay. So that, that would add, but so like if, you know, the building department, the city would consider that to be in addition, you know, another hundred square feet added to the area of your house.
Right.
So that, and then you're adding another porch, basically with the, with this enclosed screen deck. Which would not count as interior space. That would not add area to your house, but the mudroom would. And I guess my interpretation of this, uh, James is, is just going, going by the building code, the definitions that are in the, in the building code. So, I mean, I, I'm looking at, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure there's enough to go on here.
Okay. What, what information could I supply that would be more helpful?
Well, I, for me, it's more about the relationships, you know, what is the roof pitch? Why, how does that tie in at the upper wall? Where, you know, where's the top of your wall from the new addition? Um, you know, that door we mentioned, what does the roof do where this, where the deck extends out past the mudroom? Does it just simply extend out? Does it do something different? Um, how many windows do you intend to have on this, on the screen deck? Is this, you know, you know, this is, is going to be visible from Cedar Place and then partially visible from Boyd. And your property is in a great location. Um, like you could see it all the way down, like blocks away down southwest. So, you know, if, if for instance, those bushes, you know, um, didn't make it through a winter, this addition would be visible all the way down past, uh, South Side Elementary School. So, I guess, you know, I'm just, I'm just, if we can get more information on this, we could very easily say, yep, this is great. Um, I just, you know, I'm not, I'm just having trouble understanding the full extent of the proposal.
So I can answer that there's windows on the screen deck. It's all going to be screened in. There would not be a single window. It would all be just screen. Um, for the entire proposed addition, there is one window, well, one traditional window, which is facing the Boyd Street. And then on the door, there would be, uh, to let in a little bit more light, I would assume we do, uh, a half window up top. Um, roof pitches, I'll have to get from my contractor to figure out what he thinks.
Okay. Jay, uh, it sounds like, yeah, go ahead. I, I was just going to say, okay, go ahead. Now, as I say, it, it's, you know, having this information orally is good, but it's not really part of the proposal. And so I would, I'm not even sure that if we approved it, I'm not sure how we would frame that, that motion to approve. It sounds like Jay, a lot of your, you know, before we close the public comment, it sounds like a lot of your concerns could be allayed with an elevation drawing or illustration. Easily. Okay. Uh, does anyone have any other questions for the applicant? I know I have one. Um, the, the deck, the, i- it's seventeen feet wide here, according to the drawing. Would that extend past the house? To the left there?
So looking at, at this drawing here, to the left of that would be eleven oh three Southwest. It would not. We would actually, I, we would have, it, no, it'd be flush with the house. It would not extend past house.
Be flush with the house. And is, am I correct that it's a seventeen foot measurement?
Um, with.
Am I reading that right? The width? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, interesting. Uh, okay. Does anyone have any other questions for the applicant at this time?
Well, yeah, I'd just go one. I think, uh, Jay's got some good points about the roof. Uh, this, I understand this, what you're talking about it doing is hooking in right underneath the windows. And you're basically covering up that, what's currently an existing, very short roof span. Is that right?
That, that would be correct.
Okay. So you'd be going from that point. It's not going to be an extremely steep slope, but it would have a slope out to the, to the edge there.
Yeah.
But looking, but looking at that, um, Jay, I would, I would, uh, not agree with you on being visible. It's not visible at all from Southwest. Coming up by the school. You've got to be up on Boyd Street before you can see back in there.
Well, before we discuss among the commissioners.
That's another issue on this, but yeah.
Yeah. We could, there's plenty of time for discussion. Once we're done asking the applicant any more questions, so.
I, I have a question, um, for the applicant. Um, hi, James. So i- is this project urgent in any way? Is there any sort of damage that necessitates, you know, this project being completed speedily or is this just, um, you know, something that you guys would like to do? I'm just curious about the timeline moving forward with some of the additional information or questions that we have.
Um, well, my, my wife's about five, four weeks away from a due date, so I can get in through there and if, uh, we have any baby here, I don't know. It might be a little more complicated. We, ideally, we would like to get started on the majority of this sooner rather than later because of that. Um, but of course, we, we, we love neighborhood. We aspect of it, we would want to do this right and we're not a pit to, to taking in any opinions that you guys have. And we appreciate all the input. So, uh, it's kind of a toss up. Uh, we, of course, selfishly, we'd like to get going with it.
Well, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Definitely. Um, okay. Thanks, Megan. Any other questions for the applicant before we discuss as a group? All right. Thank you so much. And, uh, seeing as there's no one else that wishes to speak in a public comment, close the public comment at this time. Thank you so much, James, for answering our questions.
Thank you, guys.
Um, well, it sounds like there have been some great questions. It sounds like, uh, maybe an elevation drawing would solve a lot of questions and concerns, but I'd love to hear what you guys have to, have to say.
I would say, yeah, an elevation drawing, I think, would solve, uh, some of the concerns, particularly about the roof pitch. Cause you get into low slope pitches like that. The next thing you know, you're creating a hazard for future leaks and whatever on this.
Right.
The other issue that, uh, your LSJ raised this, I'd kind, I'd thought about it, but then make a note of it is the the size of that door at the end of the walkway. Um, I mean, I'm guessing you would probably have to extend that out a little bit further to at least get a thirty inch door in there. You know, standard door on that.
Right. Plus the depth of the, the, it's not really a wall, but the screen assembly, whatever that is. Yeah.
By the time you got your framing in there, it'd be, you know, probably a little more than the front, might be two feet.
Probably, right. Yeah.
To get out there.
So I think it just needs a little more consideration. You know, I don't know. It's, it's tough. It's just tough to say. I, I'm not sure, you know, it's hard to say what I'm really looking at.
I was gonna agree with you, Jay, just because I understand the footprint, you know, in terms of the outlining, but it But it would be, um, and I I it sounds really straightforward as we're discussing it and hearing from the applicant his ideas, but. Just for visualization sake, I do think that, you know, um. An additional rendering of of the elevation, the exterior look, I think would be beneficial.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm just agreeing.
Thank you, Megan, that's a great point, and I would also say examples of specific materials. Seeing as how, uh, nine-inch board is is no longer available, it sounds like. Uh, maybe just specific examples, um, color, swatches, brand names, um, things like that, I think would be very helpful. Uh, to pair with that elevation drawing.
I would agree, because especially since if this is vinyl that's on the house now, um, it's probably been there, it's a size that, you know, it's a format of vinyl that's. No longer available, so it's clearly been there for some time. And I would wonder if, um. You know, normally, we wouldn't allow vinyl at all in in this district. So I think that's would have to be a special consideration on its own, and without knowing specifically what is the proposal. I'm not sure I I would really know what I'm approving or or not approving. And and, you know, in a bigger picture, you know, I've got a pretty good idea in my head, at least of what I think the proposal is, and I would be inclined to approve. That idea that I have, but that may not match with what the applicant has, and it certainly may not match with what the other commissioners have. Um, and and their opinion is just, I I just honestly think there's just not enough information here.
So so the roof would have to be flat then, right, if that's.
Close to it. Yeah, I I I'm just, you know, rough calculating, you're coming up two feet and you're going about twelve feet back, if you're going by the screened. You know, the the depth of the screen deck, you probably want to overhang a little bit, but that's roughly a two and twelve. Most roof shingles will not, you know, you can't put roof shingles on a, on a slope that low, so I'm not sure.
Do we know what's on the, on what the roof is now on the, on the current screen porch? Obviously, it's flat.
It's a shingle, well, like, screen porch, no.
No.
That's all, that's all gonna be demolished.
Right.
Right.
And the rest of the roof is shingle.
Okay, you're right, I see that, but I just wonder what the current porches.
Uh, well, Nicole, uh, you've been, uh, deep in the parliamentary theory recently, so. Will you remind us of our options as a commission? Um, we could vote to deny and have the applicant, uh, bring this forward. Another time at our next meeting, hopefully, uh, we could vote to defer, which would, um. Keep the C of A, uh, number open and could be presented at the time, the next meeting, or we could vote to approve. Um, are those our, our theoretical three options?
Yes, those, those would be the, um. Yes, if, and for the deferment, you can put stipulations with the deferment.
Yeah, okay.
I would like to motion to defer, um, to our next meeting on the condition that we have. You know, some material information provided and, uh, elevation drawings, and they don't. They don't have to be computer drawn or anything, a hand sketch would be fine, as long as it's accurate to the proposal. Um, just to know that we 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 all understand what the, what we're considering.
And just to, um, I'll show you one other thing, vinyl is not prohibited, it's discouraged. And current guidelines say some modern materials such as plastic vinyl and mirror glass are not compatible and should be avoided.
So would this be grandfathered in then?
Well, exactly, well, the house has been vinyl as long as I've lived here.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, it's been a white, flatboard looking house.
So he could still, he could still use vinyl then?
Yeah, we aren't restricting it, we're just saying, no. It should be avoided, but it doesn't say that you have to.
Right, okay.
Well, we have a motion with stipulations, and we have a, uh, oh, Preston, you go ahead.
Well, if I could, just just jump in here just a little bit, and this is mainly just from a, from a staff perspective, um. Trying to, and I want to make sure that I'm. Coming at this from a Switzerland or Austria perspective. You know, one of the things that makes these specialty boards, I'll 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 kind of refer to you all as the specialty board, is is that, you know. Typically, the, uh, the members appointed to these boards have a high degree of of expertise, and that's. That's necessary for this type of of board, um, I think one thing I just, and and, you know, I I. We used to kind of bump into this every now and then in my previous location is. Do your best to to stay focused on the guidelines. And use your your expertise as 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 a, as a baseline, as a background, but don't get lost in. The architectural details, because you you're not an architectural review board. And you're a historic zoning commission, and so one thing that we just need to be careful of is that we. Are considering, number one, is the, is the existing sunroom? Is it, uh, character defining to the, to the structure? Um, is the proposed change, uh, radically changing, and I'm using the words from the guidelines. Is the proposed change radically changing, obscuring, damaging, or destroying? The character-defining features, so, um, I don't disagree with your all's request for this to come back, we just want to be. Uh, cognizant of of what our charge is, um, and at the same time, what the customers' needs are. You know, we've got a customer who's submitted a request, and, uh, you know, he's, he's got a timeline too, so we just need to be. Cognizant of 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 all of these different things, um, and I know you all are doing that, I, it's just easy to sometimes get. Get, get lost in the details.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Preston, I think, um, I think to that point, uh, one thing that I would note is the. Current roof pitch, would you call it a mansard roof or a hip roof there in the back? Ambro, okay, ooh, great, so. That to me is a defining feature, um, that would be, my understanding is, would be covered up by the new roof? Is that correct?
I think that one section of it.
Yeah, so that, that, I would put that in that category, so, I mean, I think, yeah.
Let's take a back and pick up on Preston's comment a minute. Having been part of the commission when these were written, uh, which I think a lot of people, some of them forget, but if you dig back to the minutes in the beginning, yeah, I'm on it. There was a reason this district is called a conservation district, not a historic district. Uh, and the idea was to conserve, basically to work out ways to conserve the general. Environmental feel of it, and not get into a lot of. Specifics about historic preservation, and oh, you've got to do this, and you've got to do that. We fought hard for this district, and we fought hard against Jonesboro. The attitude that they, way they've done it for years, that's what people thought, that's historic preservation, anytime you mentioned it. We're not gonna be Jonesboro, we're not gonna be Jonesboro, and it's still, it's still out there, it's still out there. And we tried to make the guidelines, they're a little too loose, and they do need to be redone, and they're consistent. But we also wanted to make them, you know, set them up in a way so that the community. Was not going to be burdened with a lot of having to go hire an architect or some contractor to do drawings and this kind of thing. Just to get approval to make a change in your house. Secondly, there is a reason also the guidelines refer to principal facade frequently. Uh, this is on the back, it's hardly visible except from one, for one hole through there on, uh. On Boyd Street, and Nathan, I would agree with you that it is, that is, that roof is a feature. But it's, if it were on the principal, on the front side, I would be totally di- different, but it's on the back. And it's hardly going to be noticed that there's any change there, it doesn't impact the overall look of the house. From either end or from the front.
I have a question about the visibility, I have a question about the visibility aspect, so if those bushes were gone. Would the entirety of that back part be visible?
Yes.
I don't think we can make a decision on that.
Yeah, right.
We have in the past, though.
Well, I'm just, I'm just curious about a natural feature potentially versus, you know, the building, I I'm just curious if. In theory, um, if it would be visible or not, so I'm, I wanted to see if somebody knew that.
Yeah, I drove past it today, Megan, and that wouldn't be visible. The bushes are gone.
The bushes and the trees are gone on Boyd Street, it would be totally exposed.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I I think I want to, um, you know. Keep the larger view that, you know, at this point, I don't think we're necessarily talking about the, the merits of the proposal. Um, you know, again, we have, you know, my motion is that we don't know what the merits of the proposal really are. And it's hard to say whether or not it would have a negative impact one way or another.
I think that's very well put, Jay, and that's, that's what I was going to say, that's what I was going to say.
Good way to say it, okay.
I I think, yeah, I mean, I really appreciate you putting that way, because I think this is really just a request for a little more information regarding materials and. And elevation, and, um, getting, getting that information should make us able to have that discussion. But maybe we don't quite have enough information to have that discussion at this time. Um, well, this has been great, this is, uh, this is good, it's nice to have some robust discussion. Um, thank you, everyone, Jay, you do have a motion put forward. Uh, will you remind us what that motion is?
Oh, yes, I'd like to motion to defer, uh, to our next meeting, um, on the condition that we receive. Um, some elevation drawings showing the configuration of the proposal. And then material selections for the major materials.
Wonderful, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Megan, um, Ms. Lawrence, will you call the roll, please?
Your foreside?
Yes.
Commissioner McCusker?
Yes.
Commissioner Tool?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hunter?
Yes.
And Chairman Brand?
Yes.
Motion to defer has been approved.
Wonderful, thank you so much, and, uh, thank you, James, is James gone?
I think he just stepped off.
Okay, well. Thanks, thanks, everybody, uh, good discussion, I look forward to next month.
Honestly, I, you know, I I think this would be a very easy approval, provided that information.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I think that going forward with the tree streets rewrite, we really want to define exactly what it is we expect to see in these types of proposals. And, you know, we have the, the sort of issue of, we have an elevation, but then we have no real standards against which. To review it, you know. And that can get into, you know, arbitrary territory and and using kind of our preference instead of objective standards, so. I think this really highlights, um, you know, one of the things that's missing from the guidelines and how we can make that better.
Well, and Kelly, just to echo that and build off of it, I think too that it would be more fair to citizens coming forward. If they knew what was expected or what was standard from the beginning, you know, and so I think this clarification will go a long way towards making the process more efficient. On all fronts, so I I completely agree with you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, uh, other business?
We had, um. We had, um, a question about the, the, um, new zoning district. Um, Commissioner Whitfield is not here, so I don't know if, did that get added to the agenda, Nicole, or did we, were we just gonna have it in as discussion?
I believe it was just for discussion.
Oh, it was something Whitfield brought forward?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna ask if if he has had a conversation with any of you about that. Not a lot of detail was provided in the request, and, um, so I had to make some assumptions. And I think, you know, he's, he's, he's obviously been just completely swamped at the hospital. And I'm sure that's where he is tonight, but, um. Allow me to address it this way, with that, in in having to kind of operate off of assumptions. Uh, what it could be is, it it could be just, uh, a request for a follow-up or some. Or are there any updates as it relates to an older conversation that, uh. He may have had with Matt, or, um, I'm not sure exactly, you know, how the. What the timeline was in the past, but Matt and I had had several conversations. Uh, prior to his departure about the need to create a separate residential zoning district that recognized. More historic, uh, urban forms, um, e- especially the, um. The more traditional layout of of your, your older historic neighborhoods, um, and right now. Our zoning code, um, offers up a series of single-family and multifamily zoning districts. But does not differentiate in those zoning districts by, uh, transect zone or by, uh, even by. Um, really by development characteristics, um, whether that be more traditional or, uh, more modern. Uh, you know, larger lot, curvilinear streets, that kind of thing, and so, um. What was discussed was the need to have this, this urban residential zoning classification, so to speak. And that that could apply, uh, not only in the tree streets area, but could apply to Tweety Streets, it could apply to. Mountain Home, it could apply to Carnegie, it could apply to another, a a number of areas. Um, and it would be a base district that would be, that could exist despite, uh, any zoning or conservation overlay. Um, but really, what those urban residential districts do is they recognize, again, the more traditional, uh, gridded streets. They recognize, uh, alley loads, they recognize, uh, smaller setbacks. Um, house being pulled up to the street, uh, you know, private areas in the back, um. Typically, much narrower sides, so, you know, all of your traditional forms, the house being elevated above the sidewalk, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and so, that, that's all great, and and that's a place where we want to go, that's a place that that we want to be. We are, uh, we're just still down, uh, two planners. Um, I'm thankful every day for Kelly and for Whitney, uh, and for the help that they've been able to provide. And, uh, so, so, I need to get, you know, restaffed, and then also. Uh, we need to sit down, not only as a staff, but sit down with our commissions, you all, plus the planning commission and. And, uh, begin to prioritize some of these goals, um. We've got, you know, planning commission is about to go through their goal-setting session, uh, for this year, next week, on the third, they have their. Their goal-setting session, um, you all are about to tackle your tree streets rewrite, which is fantastic, so. I think what we need to do is, is, once I, uh, get another planner in here, um. And we can begin to sit down and and prioritize some of these things with our, with our boards. We can, we can kind of line some of these policy initiatives up, because we have a number of initiatives that we want to tackle. We want to tackle everything from, um, sidewalk prioritization to, uh, open space, uh, right now, our open space. Uh, regulations, um, are are lacking and need to be re-studied. There, uh, um, this urban residential versus suburban residential. We also need to look at, uh, the whole issue surrounding, um, short-term rentals. And whether or not short-term rentals are going to be something that are allowed in the community, probably in your more traditional neighborhoods, as opposed to the suburban neighborhoods. Those, those kinds of things, so I appreciate the ask, um, we, you know, we are a planning department, so that's what we do, is we get. We get heavy into these policy conversations, um, I just need to get another planner on board. And with the help of that new planner and with the help of Miss Duggan and others, um, begin to prioritize some of these policy, uh, goals.
Thanks, Preston. That sounds great.
Yeah, Matt and I had had some conversations about the need for that kind of thing, never got into the details too much. Yeah, Matt and I had had some conversations about the need for that kind of thing. Never got into the details too much.
It will be very helpful on a number of fronts.
Exactly.
It will be very, very helpful.
Yes.
Yeah, it, it's, 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 it's frustrating for you, I'm sure for, for you all who, who may reside in the more historic neighborhoods. Um, to have a zoning district that is the exact same zoning district as the ridges. Um, or, you know, it just, it just don't match. Yeah, we're town acres or, yeah, and so.
Oh, yeah, they just have such a bad reputation. It kind of brings the whole zoning district down.
Shortly after the whole zoning change was here and all of a sudden we're R two. Um, the carport on the side of my house was there, but it was a flat, lapped metal roof that leaked, like I said. And I painted it a couple of times, tried to get, uh, so I decided, okay, I'm going to rip it off and we're just going to build it up in a pitched roof and extend it at the same pitch as the porch and go on out with it. And, um, I took it down to City Hall to get a permit for it and they like, uh, uh, we thought, we don't know. Finally, one of the planners says, I'll come out and take a look at it. So they did approve it, but still.
What about neighborhood covenants?
Those are always going to be private. Okay, yeah, covenants, CCNRs and, and those kinds of things are recorded at the register deeds office. Um, uh, they're just not enforceable by your local government.
Okay, are they, is there a timeframe for those, Preston? Because I know there was one in the neighborhood here, but I'm not sure it's still enforceable.
I don't know. I need to ask Kelly if she's aware if, um, she's, yeah, I'm not aware. I think it's dependent on how you set up your covenants.
Right.
By the neighborhood.
Right. I was just wondering, because there is, there was or is one here. I just was curious if it's still enforceable. People seem to kind of neglect it anyhow, so.
Well, have you gone to the registered deeds to, to get a copy of?
No, no, that'd be good. That'll be good, yes.
No, that could be really cool.
Yeah, right.
Yep. All right, what else do we have?
That's it.
I have to share that I, I, I went the other night. I know we're still on, on formal meeting time, forgive me. But I'm so thankful that I got to be able to go and witness timber. And I got to go. I got to go on a night that Nathan was going to be on the news. And I jumped in the middle of his interview and I really don't think that the interviewer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. She was fine. She was fine. I'm glad you liked it. I'm glad you liked it.
Did you get your fifteen minutes of, of, of fame, Preston?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I did. Yeah, yeah. I, I just put my arm around him and I said, man, this place is incredible.
We were telling one of your servers, Nathan, you need a tent for regulars called Old Faithful, because I'm pretty sure I see the same five faces there every time I go.
It's really true. It's really true. I try to advertise, hey, we have like spaces available, but they always get taken up. Those tents are very popular with the same group of people. I mean, they're so COVID safe. It's really.
Yeah, they're fantastic.
It's a great thing. Yeah. Well, thanks, Preston. I'm glad you had a good time.
Yeah.
Uh, all right. Well, thanks, everybody, for a great meeting, um, and, uh, look forward to seeing everybody next month, I guess.
Great.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank y'all.
Bye, y'all. See you later.
Thanks.